City of West Bend, this is Monday, November 11th. We recognize the quorum of our licensing board here tonight with Alderman Butchlick, myself, and Alderman Zingshaim here. Our first item of business is regular meeting licensing board minutes from October 21st, 2024.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlick and Alderman Zingshaim. Any comments, questions, corrections? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next item of business is a new massage license application for the gym West Bend. Clerk, we've got two massage licenses and an amusement device application tonight. Are these ready to go as far as paperwork and approvals and things?
They are all ready to go, thank you.
Okay, great. I'll make a motion to approve the new massage license application for the gym West Bend. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Zingshaim. Any comments, questions, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. The next one, I don't know if this is Zbrow or Zbrow Spa, well, new massage license application.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Zingshaim and Alderman Butchlick. Any comments, questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And our last item of business is Vortex Pickleball Midstate Amusement Games, amusement device application.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlick and Alderman Zingshaim. Any comments, questions, discussion on this one? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And our licensing board is adjourned.
I call the order a meeting of the Finance Committee. We have seven agenda items this evening. The first one is the approval of minutes from the Finance Committee regular meeting on October 21st.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlick and Alderman Schmidt. Any comments, corrections, additions, deletions? All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Second agenda item is the 2025 Collective Bargaining Agreement between the City of West Bend and the Dispatchers and Clerical Union Local 503.
We had a positive discussion with our union representatives. It was a really brief negotiation and happy to share with you that we're presenting an agreed upon agreement for the next year.
Thank you very much, Jay. It was included in your packets. Can I entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Alderman Berquist and Alderman Allen. He kind of slayed, but he was there. Any comments, questions for Jay in this regard? We have a motion to second. All those in favor of approving the 2025 Collective Bargaining Agreement between the City of West Bend and the Dispatchers and Clerical Union Local 503, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number three, approve the City of West Bend accounts receivable write-offs. Good evening, Carrie.
Good evening. I had attached three different lists of accounts that require common council authorization to be uncollectible. The larger list is comprised of ambulance invoices billed out under our contract with the Three Rivers billing. And the majority of these accounts have been placed in the state that collection program for further follow-up collection. Any subsequent collections by the state will result in revenue recognition when received. The total amount of that group is $107,127.72. The second small list are invoices from 2022 for miscellaneous services provided by the city and invoiced by the Finance Department. This group of uncollectible accounts totals $178.62. The third list are the 2021 delinquent personal property taxes that are still outstanding from businesses that have ceased operations. And the total of this list is $1,271.24. Just looking for authorization from council to deem the grand total uncollectible of The finance budget does have for 2024, $160,000 budgeted for write-offs and end-of-year audit adjustments. So, are there any questions at all?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you very much.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlick and Alderman Zingshaim. Now, any questions for Carrie in this regard? And this is more, Carrie, just to confirm, this is an accounting practice that we do every year to get those quote-unquote "off the books," but if receivables come in, we still accept those at that time.
Yep, that's correct.
And we budget for this every year.
Yes.
Wonderful, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of accepting, approving this City of West Bend accounts receivable write-off, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much, Carrie.
Thank you.
Item number four is a resolution accepting donations to the Fire Department. Welcome, Chief. Good evening.
Good evening, thank you. Before you use a resolution to consider accepting, I'm sorry, accepting donations for the Fire Department, we have accepted donations for $100 from Richard Cohn, $150 from the West Bend Women's Club, $500 from Marie Jors, and $500 from Lonnie Casey. All those donations were made specifically for our smoke detector and carbon dioxide detector programs that Captain Asland runs. And as a, just a note of current events, if you will, our guys responded to an alarm just the other morning. They got called for the odor of smoke in a second-floor apartment. When they arrived there, they couldn't find the source of the smoke for some time. They eventually went to the first floor, found a pizza that had been burnt in the oven over the entire night, and created a significant smoke condition in that apartment, which included a young girl at the time. Didn't wake anybody up. As you might imagine where I'm going with this, none of the apartments had functioning smoke detectors. Captain Asland's been instrumental in rooting these locations out throughout his career here, especially over the last couple of years, and I think his efforts should be recognized. He's, as you can expect, on the case on this particular apartment building. So with that, I would ask you to consider this resolution.
Motion to approve.
Thank you very much, Alderman Berquist and Alderman Sparts. Any questions, comments? I'll just add a commentary for those who made those donations, and very generous donations, thank you very much. Obviously, as Chief has indicated, it goes a long way to making this community safer. All those in favor of a resolution to accept, accepting donations to the Fire Department, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Chief. Item number five is a resolution to accept donations to the Parks, Recreation, and Forestry Department. Welcome, Mike.
Thank you, everyone. This evening, we have a very impressive list of donations to present to the common council and the community. The first donation of $2,000 was donated by the Gears Organization. This is our bike group that we work with out at Glacier Blue Hills in Regner Park. This $2,000 goes towards the Recreation Division. This is the proceeds from the May 31st, 2024 Beer Garden at the Beach House. The second donation of $1,280 donated by the West Bend Friends of Parks and Recreation for sponsorship of our youth football team t-shirts. The third and impressive, very impressive donation of $540 donated by Riverside Disc Golf Club for Riverside Disc Golf Course, Riverside Park Disc Golf Course. The next donation of $5,000 donated by the West Bend Kiwanis Early Risers Foundation for library basement renovations. This is the fifth installment of a total gift of $50,000. Thank you to that organization. The next donation of $58 was donated by various citizens at the donation ballard out at the archery range. The next donation has a total value of $72,490. This is a donation by the Ice Age Trail Alliance for improvements on Ice Age Trail, Ice Age National Scenic Trail in Ridge Run Park installed at the Strickland-Marth Trailhead on Washington Street. This is the construction installation of a 50-foot bridge and 200 feet of boardwalk. So if you have not seen that yet, please stop over there. It's not a lot, it's not a long walk from Washington Street. It's literally 50, 60 feet, okay, maybe 80 feet in. It's a pretty cool bridge over Silver Creek and the boardwalk. Ice Age Trail Alliance did an outstanding job on this project. Thank you to them. And this evening's last donation, value of $7,025, donated by the West Bend Athletic Association for a new LED scoreboard on field number three out at Quas Creek Park. So all three of those scoreboards have been updated in the last probably three years. So again, thank you to these individuals and organizations. Many of them continually donate and help improve quality of life here in the city of West Bend. And West Bend would certainly be a lot different community if it wasn't for these people. Thank you.
Can I entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Alderman Zingshaim and Alderwoman Sizer.
I need abstain or anything from softball association.
Okay. He does not need to, but thank you for clarifying that, John. Any questions, comments for Mike on these? Again, I say thank you to these, and I echo your comments, to these organizations, these individuals who help put the community in what is West Bend. And you're very right, we'd be a very, very different community without the level of involvement, engagement, and generosity in this community. All those in favor of accepting donations to Park Rec and Forestry Department, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. That was a delay. Item number six on our agenda is a resolution authoring the transfer of Special Olympic funds for payments of expenses. Mike?
Thank you. This evening, our department is requesting approval to transfer $1,500 from the YARC account for supplies that support the Special Olympics program. Currently, we have over $27,900 in that account. These funds are from previous donations that are, specific use is for the therapeutic recreation programs or our Special Olympics. Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlick and Alderwoman Sizer. Any comments or questions? There being none, all those in favor of resolution authorizing the transfer of Special Olympic funds for payment of expenses, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven on our agenda is a resolution to transfer funds from the Project Seek account for the Lachlan Conservancy Nature Playground.
Thank you. This evening, our department is requesting permission to transfer $2,679.64 of the Project Seek funds to a capital account. That would empty this account. We would use these funds to help cover the costs for site preparation at the New Nature Playground at Lachlan Conservancy. The Friends of Lachlan Board unanimously approved the use of these remaining funds for the playground project. These funds originated from grants and donations from 15, 20 years ago. And in 2012, the Finance Committee approved the transfer of all these Project Seek funds into an account to be used out at Lachlan Conservancy. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Thank you very much, Alderman Zingshaim and Alderman Schmidt. Any questions or comments for Mike? There being none, all those in favor of resolution to transfer funds from the Project Seek account for Lachlan Conservancy Nature Playground, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
That was delayed.
Thank you.
That motion carries. Thank you very much, Mike. With no further business before the Finance Committee, I adjourn as chair.
Good evening, welcome to the City of West Bend. This is a meeting of the Common Council of the City of West Bend. It is Monday, November 11th. Before we get started tonight, I want to wish a very heartfelt thank you to the brave men and women of our armed forces on this Veterans Day. Happy Veterans Day to those of you who are in the crowd who are veterans, and to the members of our community in this, in this great country, and thank you for your service. And I'd ask that we just take a brief moment of silent reflection on this Veterans Day. I invite you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We recognize the quorum of our common council here tonight, and with Alderman Allen joining us on teleconference more than 24 hours in advance of this meeting. Notice the time, place, date, and subject matter of the meeting was posted in accordance to Wisconsin state statutes. Clerk, can I confirm that this, can you confirm that this meeting was properly posted?
Yes, it has been.
Thank you. Our first item of business is approval of our common council regular meeting minutes from October 21st, 2024.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlick, and a second by Alderman Allen. Any comments, questions, corrections? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to our consent agenda, items two through 10, which we're just taking up just a moment ago, and I'll entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Alderman Zingshaim and Alderwoman Sizer. Any comments, questions on the consent agenda? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Our first item of business tonight is a public hearing on our proposed City of West Bend 2025 budget. Anybody wishing to address the common council tonight on our 2025 budget, now is your opportunity. I invite you to the microphone. Please just state your name, your address, and you will be heard as it relates to our 2025 City of West Bend proposed budget. The public hearing is now open.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you, Alderman Sternig and Alderman Schmidt. That's, that's a motion to close the public hearing. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The public hearing is now closed. We'll move on to our agenda items for consideration tonight. The first is our resolution appropriating the necessary funds for the operation of the government and administration of the City of West Bend for the year 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlick and Alderman Sternig. Obviously, this is our 2025 budget. We've had this in front of the common council for several meetings now. Any other final comments or questions on next year's budget? All right, seeing none, I will call a vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? That motion carries. Our next is a mayoral appointment to the Traffic Safety Commission. We have an opening on the Traffic Safety Commission, and I received an application and actually a real nice phone call from Michael Hillsley. If you don't know him, he's the auto safety center guy, and he's a very visible gentleman around town. He's involved in the, in the Kiwanis Club around town and other charitable endeavors as, as well as his wife, and I believe he will be a great addition to the Traffic Safety Commission, and Chief does as well. So this is a, I'm asking for your approval on this appointment, and I will look for a motion.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Schmidt and Alderman Sternig. Any questions, comments, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next item of business is an ordinance to amend the 2020 Comprehensive Plan for the City of West Bend, Wisconsin, for a change in the recommended land use for approximately 34 acres of land located at the northeast corner of South 18th Avenue in County Trunk Highway NN.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Sternig and Alderman Zingshaim. The recommended, the current land use of this area is for planned business park, and the change would be to, for the recommended land use to be residential. This was taken up at the Plan Commission on Wednesday night, and the Plan Commission voted in favor, nine to zero, to advance this to the common council tonight. So with that, Jim, I'll turn it over to you.
Sure. So we're asking the council tonight to enact an ordinance to actually change the land use from the 2020, which was planned business park, to the residential. This is to help facilitate with the redevelopment or the development of that southern area in the old Tiff District, number eight.
Thank you, Jim. I know that we have several people in our audience here tonight who were at the Plan Commission on Wednesday night. We had a public hearing on this topic, as well as the rezoning had a public hearing. We did that public hearing together on these two topics. The public hearing lasted about an hour and 45 minutes, and I told these residents, many of them, again, who are here tonight, that if they would like to, to speak tonight, to address our common council, I would give them that opportunity. I know that there is not a public hearing on our agenda tonight, but I want to be true to my word, and I would like to extend that courtesy to them. If that is okay with the council, just a simple head nod, I think, would be good. I would also like to ask the, the members of the audience who do wish to speak, I'd prefer not to have a, an hour and a half open mic here tonight, so if someone does, I don't know if you've got a spokesperson or two or three that would like to talk, but if someone comes up and says something that is on your mind as well, maybe, maybe refrain from coming up and repeating somebody who spoke before you. But again, I do want to give you that courtesy, and so I'm gonna, I'm gonna open the podium. If you would like to speak, just give us your name and address, and your, your comments will be heard.
My name is Ron Struck, and I reside at 3411 George Court in the town of West Bend, and I did appear at that public hearing last week. And I do have a document. Can I pass this out to the council? When I did appear last week, I did mention that, you know, obviously I understood what the, the objective was, was to put a development in that parcel of land. And I wasn't objecting to the development itself, but what I did object to was the population density for that particular parcel, because the zoning that I found out was an RS4, which is single-family residence, but it is the least restrictive zoning regulation that the city has, which allows for the minimum square footage of a lot to be 7,200 square feet. That's basically one-sixth of an acre. I built my house in the town of West Bend to avoid the congestion of the city dwelling and the population density, and this proposed development appears to be going back in this direction. I mean, I referenced a number of regulations for the town of West Bend zoning, specifically from Chapter 17, Subsections G and H, where the minimum for those parcels that are zoned that way are an acre to an acre and a half. Now, my concerns were that the proposed population density for this particular parcel is not consistent with the surrounding community. If, all you have to do is look at the property to the west of this parcel, to the south, or even the subdivision I live in, which is six-tenths of a mile from this proposed development, all of those properties are an acre to an acre and a half and above. So I'm concerned about the density that is being proposed for this parcel. I'm also concerned as to why RS4 was designated as the zoning type for this area. There's one, two, and three zoning types, which allow for 15,000 square feet, 12,600 square feet, and 9,600 square feet. But I don't know what kind of consideration was done where the committee decided to go straight to zoning for four, which is the least restrictive, at 7,200 square feet. I'm also concerned about the adverse impact that it has on the environment and the beauty of the area, the high traffic volumes that will come from trying to put 90 houses on 34 square, 34 acres of property. I'm also concerned about the cost of the infrastructure development, the widening of 18th Avenue, the installation of the sidewalks, lighting, and so on. I'd also like to know if the developers preliminary plat would be available for the public to view as to what they're planning for this area. And before the committee makes a final, the planning committee makes a final recommendation to the council, will the plat be available for public viewing as well? So we know what exactly is going into this, this particular area. And finally, will there be the proper communication to those property owners that are impacted by this potential development? I think last time we heard that the outreach was between 200 to 250 feet from the proposed building development. Those people were contacted. Well, that left out an awful lot of people who are impacted that didn't even know about this. So I'm concerned about future developments. Will we communicate it in a manner that makes us aware of what's happening? And finally, as elected officials, I hope you consider the long-term impact that this has onto the environment and the community, and choose wisely. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ron.
I live at 3471 County Highway NN. I'm also very concerned about the density of the proposed development. I don't think anybody has any major concerns about it transitioning over to residential, but I'm concerned about the watershed quality. I'm concerned about the percolation rate of that soil and what's gonna happen. I didn't see any plans for any sort of retention pond to help keep the water that is going to be gathered in that area, in that area. So I think we're gonna have some serious impacts to the local creeks and lakes.
Thank you, Elise.
I live in the town of West Bend as well, and I also attended the meeting last week. I actually just had some questions and maybe some comments that maybe can be some food for thought for the council. Last week, we sat in the meeting, and Newman Homes, along with Mr. Chambeau, discussed 90 homes being presented or using the property for 90 homes. I have an article, if you don't mind, I would like, can I hand it out to you guys?
Sure.
So the meeting we had last week, or the meeting that you had last week, and we attended, two days later, Mr. Chambeau, along with Newman Company, were cited in the Milwaukee Business Journal. And I'm just gonna read part of it, because it's a little conflict of what was told last week at the meeting. It says, "A neighborhood with 95 homes would be, could be coming to the area of West Bend", which was once planned as a business park. So now, when we bring up the idea of the density, which I think is the majority of the problem that we have here, not that it's just being rezoned to residential, we went in two days from 90 homes being presented to now in this article stating 95. It also sits, talks about the site near it being the headquarters of West Bend Insurance Company and Delta Defense. This is two of our area's largest employers. From my understanding, neither company was notified about this, and neither company is quite happy with this. "As the city's first new division, subdivision in 10 years, it would help serve a need for new housing in the city, according to West Bend City Administrator Jay Chambeau. There's been a lot of demand," Chambeau said. "We really are excited about moving forward with Newman." My understanding was that last week was the preliminary discussion on this, with the, tonight being the final decision. It seems to me that this is pretty much a done deal, and the conversations have been had and have been going on for quite a while, with no consideration to any of the town residents, the town board, and the businesses next door that employ the majority of the people in the city of West Bend. Other things in the article, "Beyond bringing more housing to the city, the project could help spur additional commercial development by bringing infrastructure for uti- help spur additional commercial development by bringing infrastructure for utilities to the area," according to Chambeau, and Newman Company Partner Brian Lindgren. What additional commercial development are you talking about? You're rezoning it to RS4. What additional business or commercial development can be put in there? "I think it's a win-win," Lindgren said, recently told the West Bend Plan Commission. "It unlocks some additional business space and provides much-needed housing for residents." Right now, there is at least 50 homes for sale in the city of West Bend. Bringing 90, which was what we were told, we understand now 95, okay, I understand that. The issue is the density. There is no buffer from the town to the city of this proposed site. You are going from city to rural to jam-packed city, with no regard for any of the town residents that live in that area. No conversation has been made. Newman Company is requesting city support for the project in the form of tax incremental financing, Chambeau said. "That could enable the company to receive a percentage of future property taxes the development generates in the exchange for fronting the cost of installing infrastructure on the site." Last week, we specifically asked the question, I asked the question, how was this going to be paid for? Mr. Chambeau got up and said that there were multiple options, but nothing was finalized, and things needed to be worked out. It appears it has been worked out before this meeting had even taken place. Furthermore, what happens if they don't sell the lot and the home packages? You're playing with taxpayer money. Who is on the hook if the development is not successful? I'm asking that we have the opportunity to have conversations moving forward, and I'm asking that the density be lowered, and be respectful of the neighbors that live out there and have lived out there for a very long time. Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy.
Paul Rice, 5345 Quas Drive. I went and visited their subdivision that they put in, in Cedarburg. And I would encourage anyone voting on this matter to please go and see it. It's not far from Five Corners. And it raised some questions in my mind. As a past chairman of the town of West Bend, one of the things we were trying to foster was cluster development, because it preserves green space and yet allows, you know, the kinds of homes that people enjoy. And the best example of a cluster development that I can think of is Overlook Circle in the town of West Bend. But there, the lots are very large. In talking to the younger generation, because, you know, I'm 80, they don't want that. They want smaller lots, because they don't want to be mowing grass. And, well, that's their business, that's just fine. But the kids have to play somewhere. And when you go and see the development in Cedarburg, there are several areas that couldn't be built, because there's water there, several ponds. There is no effort whatsoever. I didn't see anything that looked like a park. The old rule, I thought, in the city of West Bend was when you made a development, there would be a park. And the developer, I think, was at least partially responsible for seeing to that, and that's why we have so many fine parks in the city of West Bend. Little, sometimes, but open space. That development, and I don't know much else about it, other than having visited it, would get about a D minus in green space development, because they really didn't do anything about it. And you actually would have to warn your children to stay away from the ponds and stuff that's there. The other issue that I had is that there are incompleted roads. And, you know, there are two roads that go directly into this area. If those were employed in traffic, part of the traffic could go on the road that already exists, that is the westernmost from Walmart, where there is a light, and that would take the traffic off 18th and put it on Paradise, where people are more likely to be headed. That's all I have to say. Please look at this development, because it's almost exactly what they're proposing, and consider the egress and ingress from that, from those other roads. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Rice.
Hi, there. Thanks so much for letting us speak. I'm Jason Ketcha. I just moved here in July with my wife. She's a doctor at the clinic here at Frehderd. We're privileged to live on Silver Lake. It's a beautiful area. We love West Bend. We love the city. We like the downtown. You guys did a fantastic job on the downtown, the restaurants, everything that the city has to offer. But we also love the beautiful area that's Silver Lake and this area on the southeast of the city, the open spaces. You know, the area is not just for the town, it's for the people in the city, too, that are able to enjoy Silver Lake. So I just believe that, you know, along with everybody else here, 92 high-density homes does not fit in this area, right? This is not in the middle of the city of West Bend. This area is surrounded on three sides by the town of West Bend. So we ask you to be a good neighbor, listen to us, be responsive to our concerns, okay? I think we're okay. I think it's, instead of RS4, if you could make it RS3, we would be on board with that. I think if you try to go forward with this, and, I don't want to say cram it down our throats, but, you know, just try to push this through, and it seems like a very fast process, you know, we're going to organize, we're going to try to stop this, okay? And I, for sure, we're going to slow it down. So please, be a good neighbor, listen to us, try to be responsive. I think we're asking for something very simple. Change it from RS4 to RS3, we would be happy with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Contrary to most of the people here, I'm actually in the city of West Bend, and my property is surrounded on all sides by this development. We have about 2.8 acres where our home is. I'm neither plus or minus with a big yard. God put us at a place with a big yard. I grew up with a yard that was about 10 feet by 50 feet, and never once felt like I was neglected, because I had a small yard. But I want to propose to you guys about $450,000 homes. The city doesn't need $450,000 homes. I have kids in their 20s that are married, that are buying their first homes. $450,000, just, when you guys picture yourselves in your 20s, married, Mr. Sparks, can you imagine what a $450,000 home, how unattainable that would have been to you and your wife when you were younger? That's not even in the ballpark for what we're proposing for the younger people to move here for the jobs and whatnot. Truthfully, I'd rather see them make even smaller lots and put $300,000 houses there, because that's what, that's what our community needs. We're having younger couples, younger people, move outside of West Bend, Hartford, Kewaskom, further north, places where the lots are a little bit more affordable. We are actually losing residents. I mean, I can't cite a study, I can just cite, you know, all the 20-some-year-olds that I know, that they can't afford to live in West Bend. So, you know, just something to contemplate there, whether it's this development, a future development. People aren't moving to West Bend, I don't believe, for $450,000 houses. Truthfully, they can find a nicer spot for 450 grand. My kid's building a great house on a wooded lot in Hartford for 350, because there isn't one here. What's bringing people to West Bend is our great companies, like West Bend Mutual, Epic Creative, Milwaukee Tools, Delta Defense. That is drawing people here. And what we don't have, I know we just, the city picked up the industrial park, I forget the name of it, where Milwaukee Tools is, but we're still, that's going to be filled up at some point. This currently is an industrial park. I know last week, the example was brought, and it's always a worst-case scenario, we could put a metal stamping facility there, or the big concrete block factory. We could, but it's not going to happen. That's going to move to somewhere else. But what's there right now, and moving south behind Walmart, really is a good fit. I don't know how everyone around Silver Lake feels about this, but I'm just speaking for myself, who lives there, and will have this on three sides of me. Truthfully, I'd rather have some more of the industrial park right around there. If you were to go through with this, just a couple of key points, it is 2 and 1/2 miles to the closest city park, and you're putting 90 families right there. I mean, there's no God-given right to a city park, but West Bend is known for exceptional parks. My wife and kids would spend the day sometimes trying to hit as many parks in a day as they could. There's so many, and they never would make it, at the end of the day. So I would like to see a park and a little more green space if this is going. And let's see, I am really concerned with my $35,000 sidewalk bill, because I've got this development on the north and the south of me. So I would really like a real answer. I should say real, no disrespect there. An educated, realistic answer on how sidewalks are getting paid for. There is a history where the city, I believe, owes it to constituents to let them know far in advance how these sidewalks are getting paid for, after people getting, you know, $10,000-plus bills for that. Also, I am aware, so just a quick question, on the 200-foot rule, I don't know who that goes to, for people being notified for the last meeting, is that 200 feet only in the city, or does that 200 feet include the town as well?
It included the town.
Okay. There were multiple homes that were missed, then, that were within that 200-foot, just in talking to people who were not notified, neither here nor there, I guess, but I see, I think that is the couple of things I had to say. But I think, truthfully, the biggest key that I did want to hit on is, we don't need more $450,000 homes. Let's get, let's get younger people to stay in West Bend and be able to afford to buy a house in West Bend, and start growing their family, and becoming Benders, instead of trying to import other people. Truthfully, someone in town already, who's got 450 grand for a house, isn't going to move there. They're going to, they're going to move somewhere else. So, my two cents. Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Aaron. All right. We've heard from six individuals here tonight, and again, we're talking about the 2020 Comprehensive Plan for the Recommended Land Use, currently Planned Business Park to Residential. With that, I think I'll entertain a motion and maybe get discussion going.
There was a motion.
We already did a motion? Okay. We've already got a motion on the floor, and a second. Thank you. I'd like to hear your comments, questions, discussion.
I guess this would go to Jay. Is there any indication of a park possibly being put in that subdivision?
I'll defer to Mike. Mike Inch is in the crowd. Sorry to put you on the spot, Mike, but you and I have not had a conversation about this.
The current development and layout, lot layout, does not have enough room or space or anything like that to accommodate a neighborhood park within this development. The closest park property that we have that's somewhat developed would be the dog park down on 18th Avenue. We have more than just the dog park there, we have additional acreage for public use.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
My first impression of this is that it was not a good fit for the area, based on the density, population density. So I'm hearing what these people are saying, and I tend to agree with them on that.
Having been at the Plan Commission, heard many more comments than those, and some repeat comments from what we had the other night, my takeaway when I look at this is this. We are looking at zoning it at RS4, which has a minimum lot size. When you take the total acreage and the square feet of that acreage divided by the 90 or 95 homes, it's significantly higher than what the minimum is. As we looked at the conceptual plan, and it's just at a concept at this point, I, don't quote me on this, but I want to say was somewhere in the area of 2.8 homes per acre. Jay, maybe you can, or the developer, in rough numbers, it's somewhere around that. And that's significantly larger than the minimum, which is RS4. It's my understanding that, you know, when we look at these types of developments, we typically will zone at RS4 to create the flexibility. Again, as we look at this from a Plan Commission perspective, this is about the changing the comprehensive plan and the zoning for that land. This is not approval of a development, and it's not approval of a plan, it is not approval of how many homes, what types of homes, a city park or no city park. This is about giving a developer an opportunity to come to the Plan Commission with a plan for what they want to do with that land. And that will take time, it takes investment from their perspective, because now you get into things like studies for traffic analysis, and looking at environmental impact, and water, and watershed, those types of things. None of those things happen until they have a property that's zoned appropriately for what they want to develop. So that's really what we're talking about tonight, is amending the comprehensive plan and rezoning this property to residential.
I know you closed that part of the meeting about here, but my question is, acreage, did you consider all the roads in there? Part of your, did you just divide it by acres, by number of people? I think we got to take all the roads out, and then you got how many acres you have that...
Let me, let me explain. Matt, Mr. Alderman Sternig is correct. This is, this is changing our comprehensive plan from Planned Business Park to Residential, and then to rezone it as residential. We haven't even officially seen a site plan from the Plan Commission, to the Plan Commission yet. I know that our staff has, and they've been in talks with the developer on a basic idea of what they'd like to do there, but there is still quite a process. If this does become a TID, which that's not guaranteed, there's a public hearing that was scheduled at our last Plan Commission meeting coming up a month from now, or a month from now. There's another whole joint review board that has to take this up, take it up for vote, and then again, the common council take it up for vote. So there's still several months, at least, in the process before getting all the approval... the approvals to potentially do something on this property. Brian, I know you're here tonight. I'd like to give you the opportunity, if you'd like to address the council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. As I mentioned, my name is Brian Lindgren. I am with Newman Developments. And just as in front of the Plan Commission, I'm tasked to speak for the development, to speak on behalf of the people that aren't here, and namely, those who've been searching desperately for a home in West Bend for a long time. So, there's a lot of conversation going on on density and otherwise, and it really comes down to the differences between a city and a town, as was mentioned before. We've got city services here, water, sewer, sidewalks, stormwater requirements, things like that, emergency services, accesses to all the great resources in the city. You've got to maximize those resources, in this, residential, commercial, or otherwise. So, as was mentioned, the proposal is to change the land use, again, from industrial or business use to residential. That's really dropping a zoning into a less dense type zoning, something that transitions, as was mentioned, from those big buildings, those semi-trucks, those delivery trucks, to residential uses in the city, to residential uses outside the city and the town. So, there's various residential zoning districts that could be used everywhere, from multifamily to those with different-sized lots. What we've came in and proposed is RS4, because we feel that that's a district that provides lot sizes that people do like, that people want. This is a size of lot that can drive a size of home, that can be delivered at a value that people recognize and want to buy. And I know $450,000 is a lot of money. It is. It's really the best that we can do. And what it does is unlock the market. There's really, right now, I think somebody else mentioned, 50 homes on the market. For a city the size of West Bend, that's nothing. In my Plan Commission presentation, that's 41 days of inventory. If another home didn't get listed, in 41 days, there wouldn't be a home available to buy in the city of West Bend. So, by providing housing across anywhere in the spectrum of housing, it helps for housing mobility. It helps the people who want to move up, helps the people who want to downsize, it helps people who want to move in. So, there's a lot to go, you know, a lot of steps, as was mentioned prior to this, but these are the first steps. A zoning district and a land use that works, that is a compromise from business to something in the town, it starts the process of designing a plan. A plan, as I've mentioned at the Plan Commission, is way less than the zoning that would be allowed through RS4. It starts the process of doing further studies, like traffic studies and stormwater, and how water gets treated, and where it goes, starts the conversation on parks, which, as you all know, the city has a park plan, and where they want them, and how much they're, you know, how much they frankly are willing to invest in them. And those are things that cost money. So, you know, we're really ready to engage in those conversations, but it all starts here. So, happy to answer any other questions you have, but I do, you know, like I said, I want to advocate for those who aren't here to say that we'd love to get more housing in the city of West Bend.
Any questions for Brian? Alderman Sparts?
I have one for Jim, actually.
Sure.
On the density that Matt brought up, is there some comparable neighborhoods in the city with that size density?
Yeah.
I'm torn on the spot on that.
No, it's fine. We did like a real rough comparison, just based on actually zoning districts, RS4 all the way to RS1. We have a good concentration of the same density pattern that they have, is really the original area of West Bend, that has the same density area. We also have some on the north side. Started getting closer a little bit on the east side, also, on the northeast side, the Clearview area, areas that we have. So, we do have comparable densities for this. They just happen to be in some of the older areas where the, you know, again, you had the same comparable lots and everything. So, and even in the new areas, we're getting comparable, some comparable densities.
Okay. I'm going to throw one at you. With the town of West Bend, what kind, and this may be out of the area, you probably don't have it, I'm just guessing, but I'm thinking, lake-living, I've seen some of the densities around some of the lakes. What kind of densities compared to what we're looking at here?
Yeah, that probably I don't have. We don't have any kind of, you know, analysis for that, unfortunately.
Yeah, I thought they'd be out of your area, but.
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments, discussion?
Question for Newman's. I'm wondering if they had considered Corporate Center Drive. You got a street with sidewalks, and all the way up to the back end of the property you guys plan on doing out there. And I'm just wondering if there'd be an alternate or additional egress for that area?
And it would relieve the pressure of NN and 18th? And it's just, it's almost buttoned up to the property that you guys want to expand on. And someone could ride, right now, from that driveway, from that business area, can ride their bicycle all the way to the theater on a sidewalk. So, I'm just wondering if there, Newman's considering it, or?
I'll comment on that. That's really an issue that would be taken up with the site
plan. When those final site plans come in, I think, that's something that community development's going to have to work with the developer on. This issue's on the zoning and the land use, so.
Happy to answer or not. I guess I try to avoid the back and forth, but I would say that, you know, residential road and a industrial, commercial road are designed differently, and it's logical for one to end and not continue into a residential area. Just as, you know, the traffic has been brought up, a new residential area would try to discourage semi- and delivery truck traffic, driving through it as a shortcut into the business park. We do feel that the roads, you know, the traffic study will tell everybody what needs to be done, if any improvements are necessary on NN or 18th.
Thank you, Brian. Aaron, I'm going to have you be the last person.
Gotcha. So, I missed it on my notes, but this is a key one that definitely relates specifically to the zoning. It might actually end up going more to Jim, but you can let me know. Typically, in the city of West Bend, just observationally, and my understanding and conversations from when we were looking for business property to purchase, is where you have residential budding up to business park, that's frowned upon. And what typically will happen, I was told, because there was multiple places we wanted to buy land where we couldn't buy it, even though it was next to a business park, because what I was told was, there's typically a multifamily buffer that is, might not have been those exact words, but you'll have a buffer. Where you have industrial or commercial land, you'll then have multifamily, and then on the other side of that, you'll have residential homes. A key example would be over towards like Lynch GMC and the business park over there. There's a little bit of open land right there now, but I believe it's slated to be multifamily in there. And then you've got the subdivision, is it Eagle and Heron Road and all that back in there, and similar other areas around town. So, just not to be short-sighted with this zoning change, with this zoning change, is it also implied then, from Silver Lake Drive north, where this development would end, would most likely be multifamily at some point, or be open to multifamily, and then industrial park north of that?
Jay, I'll look to you if you want to answer that, or can't answer that?
Well, I can answer what is being discussed, and we're having conversations with developers as the council knows. There is commercial land, and that's, this article is accurate, that is being proposed to be part of a tax incremental finance district. We did talk about that at Plan Commission a little bit, as far as a possible funding tool for, excuse me, some of the infrastructure and incentives that go along with those developers' agreements once they're entered into negotiations with developers. And we're not, we have not done that yet. We've had preliminary conversations, and we're, I am honestly excited about the prospect of moving forward with a residential subdivision. It's one of the things that we get requested often for, is the availability of single-family lots is light, vacant lots is light in the city of West Bend. This proposal might have a chance to impact that, and it'll provide some infrastructure, water, sewer, and a potential new road for the industrial land that I think Aaron was mentioning to the north of this subdivision.
So, if I'm hearing you correct, multifamily is not a possibility, like it's completely off the table as a buffer zone between those two.
I don't know that anything is, I've been trained and been around a while to never say never. Aaron, I'm not saying that. I'm saying that that, the multifamily conversation has not been a conversation that I personally have, or our development team has had with a developer on any of these properties.
I don't think you've had a conversation. Just throughout the town, though, that's typically the pattern, is residential, multifamily, industrial park.
I understand. I understand what you're saying, that pattern of development exists in the city of West Bend. That's not what's being discussed in this area.
Okay. I'd like to ask the common council, do you have any more comments, questions, discussions, and then I'm going to call for a vote. Yes.
I think we need to move forward on this, but then also, once we get the plans, in my opinion, I will have a better understanding and a better idea which way I need to go. Right now, we need single-family homes in the city of West Bend. We definitely do. It's a lot better than having an industrial down there, where we've got constant truck traffic, which I know they all are concerned about. But for me to make an honest answer, I need to see the plans after we get into that second phase.
I would agree with Jim.
Okay. We've got a motion and a second on the table. Again, this is to amend the 2020 comprehensive plan on the northeast corner of South 18th Avenue and County Trunk NN, currently planned business park to residential. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. We'll move on to an ordinance to rezone approximately 34 acres of land located at the northeast corner of South 18th Avenue and County Trunk Highway NN, from M3 planned business park and temporary district to RS4 single-family residential district. Jim?
So, this is just the actual ordinance that we're asking the council to consider. This actually sets the zoning. So, this would go from the M3 planned industrial park to the RS4 single-family residential. So, this is actually the groundwork that sets the lot size minimums and setbacks and whatnot for that zoning district.
I will entertain a motion to put this on the floor.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlick and Alderman Sternig. There's a motion and a second on the floor. Any comments, questions, discussion?
I'll take a motion. I'd like to just state the fact that I'm torn in all these discussions. I've had quite a few conversations with some of the people in the audience, and I've also done some research on my own, and I've been educated by city staff in some things and all that. I'd like to reemphasize a fact, and I think I've said this in a couple of conversations, that this is a process. Okay? This is a first step in a process of getting us to the next step. And we appreciate your comments, but the city as an entity has to continue to look to grow, and we're not doing that, as evidence of the fact that we haven't had a subdivision in 10 years. So, it's my intent to approve, or to vote to approve this, on the condition that we have some sort of say when we get to the development, when we get to those plans. So, I'm hoping that we are included in those. I know we are included in those. So, just know that we're keeping the best interest of the city, and actually, my district, because it's District 3 that this subdivision is going in. So, keeping an eye on it, and I would like to, again, just move forward tonight.
Thank you, Alderman Burquist. Any other comments, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. We'll move on to our reports tonight. Our first is a report from the Parks and Rec Commission meeting.
Thank you, Joel. The Park and Rec met on October 31st, very full meeting. I will try to keep it short, but a lot went on at that meeting. The Regner Swim Pond, Regner hosted 14,659 users in 2024, compared to 13,868 last year. The goal was to have 2,080 Regner inflatable users. The actual number was 3,964. So, a lot of activity on the new inflatables. We did receive, well, quantities and revenues from the season passes did increase. However, we still had an operating loss. We did receive money this year, yeah, from the Washington County Save Summer Swim Payment Program, which reduced the loss a little bit. That program, however, is temporary and does decrease each year. They did make a number of recommendations to improve next year. There were no significant safety issues at the park. The staff is to be commended for their diligence and the great work that they did. Lachlan, there was a power presentation with information on various projects and programs. They have little hikers, winter fun days, adult birding, bald eagle nest watching, and so forth. There's always a lot going on at Lachlan. There was an Eagle Scout project at Lachlan. Eagle Scout Jack Miller presented his project. He, actually, three projects were completed by him. He built three fire pits made from stainless steel washing machine drums. He made firewood storage racks, and a wood tic-tac-toe checkerboard for the nature playground. So, thank you, Jack, for everything you did as part of your Eagle Scout project. Speaking of the Lachlan Nature Playground, the overlook deck was completed October 18th. The landscape contractor is installing land and stone retaining walls. Staff will begin working on the agility area, and they will be using black locust timbers that they harvest from the city. The goal is to be open to the public in spring. There are several unfunded elements. Those still include the entry sensory garden with an entry arch, the toddler maze and sculpture garden, and the town uncovered bridge area. The White Family Cabin at Ridge Run, work began in October, and that project is scheduled for completion by May 1st. Bids will be going out for 200 trees for next year to be planted in various locations. The Old Settlers Park gazebo, as many of you know, the gazebo was damaged in an auto accident in October. Costs for replacement are being investigated. The damage, unfortunately, was too extensive for repair, so a new structure in the same model and footprint is planned. Updates were also presented on facility use and rental fees. That was approved. Most of those did increase a little bit due to price comparison, popularity, and demand. And also approved were the recreation program fees for the winter-spring season. Again, a very full meeting, a lot more details on online minutes, but I wanted to keep it as short as I could. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Seizer. Plan Commission, Alderman Sternig or Alderman Sparts?
We conducted a public hearing for a conditional use permit for a lot on 341 Sol 7th Avenue. The permit was to allow for a single-family residential home to be constructed, and that was approved. We held a public hearing for a change to the land use plan, the change of city's 2020 comprehensive plan and subsequent zoning for approximately 34 acres on Highway NN and 18th. The change in the zoning were both approved. We set a public, and that's what we just talked about here, so we proved it here, too. Set a public hearing for land use and zoning change from business park to single-family for 18 acres along County Highway NN on for 18 acres along County Highway NN on the west side of Highway 45. I have December 3rd, I think, for that meeting. I don't remember if it was the 3rd or the 12th of January, or the 7th of January for that one.
3rd sounds right.
3rd sound, it should be, yeah. Then the public hearing for regarding a possible TIF district, that was for January, wasn't it? No, that was for the 3rd, the other one was for the 12th. I have to look up the minutes, I didn't get those. I just, I know we had, we had public hearings for them. Approve, we approved an extraterritorial map for 3206 Lighthouse Lane, which separated a single lot into three lots. There were three houses on the single lot, they separated them out in individual lots. And we received a report on the downtown master plan. And that was the meeting.
Thank you, Alderman Sparts. City Administrator?
I'll just cover two quick things. First, a look back, just one week ago, this room looked very different. It was, okay, one, almost a week ago, it was election last Tuesday and this room was used for central count. And you should all know, if you didn't have a chance to see or hear, but there were 25-plus dedicated individuals working, poll workers, chief, chief inspected our clerks team, other city staff that, that worked from 6:30 in the morning. Some of you, Alderman Allen was in attendance in, in this room, from 6:30 in the morning till 5:00 AM the next day on Tuesday morning. And everything went fine. It went as good as could be expected. There was, there were just a lot of in-person absentee ballots that were needed to be processed. They were cast in advance, which was great. We had 53% of the vote in prior to Election Day. All those ballots, as, as I think many of you know, can't be opened until Election Day. They can't be begun to be processed until 7:00 AM on, on that election day. And they were all processed properly. It's time consuming to duplicate a ballot when a ballot, when a ballot needs to be duplicated and that's really what caused some of the, the significant length in time, especially from that midnight to 5:00 AM hour. But just, just know that there were poll observers, watchers here. Our police department was present and kept everyone safe and under control. And just wanted to, to recognize publicly in this setting, you know, thanks to Jaleen and her team, she, they did a great job. Really proud of the, of the, not just clerk's team, but the city as a whole coming together and the 150 or so poll workers that, that worked that day to make it all happen. And then we'll, we'll, regarding the, the room that you're in is going to see a facelift, so you're going to have a screen that's going to come to you. Courtesy of the Communications and IT Department, they're, they're working together to, to give this room a little bit of a facelift and make it easier for you to see your, your respective screens and then some of the TV screens are going to get. So AV is going to be changed around and improved, modified over the next few weeks and it should be, everything should be in place by the next council meeting, I believe. So hopefully that's all done and ready to roll.
You shouldn't have told us. It would have been a surprise.
Well, I don't know if you like surprises.
Let's give Jaleen and her team a round of applause for the hard work last week. All right, I don't have an update tonight, so you can check item 20 off, but any, any alderpersons have any update tonight? No on this end? Alderman Allen?
Just wanted to echo my thanks as well to all the citizens, soldiers, sailors, airmen, marines, base men, and what, and under service.
Yep. Thank you for that. Any updates on, did I get a look at everybody shaking their head over here? Anybody over here? Alderman Butchlick?
Yeah, just comment, this morning at 11:11, there were a lot of brave people from West Bend that braved the high winds and called for honoring Veterans Day today. So that was really great to see the number of people show up for that. So thank you very much.
All right, we have an item. Yes, Alderman Sparts?
Also want to do a shout out to the city crews that are picking up the Leafs, Leaf Collection. They've been doing a good job. I've had a couple constituents issues and they've handled it, so.
Good.
That's coming to an end too, I think, next week. Oh wait, no, I'm a week off yet, two weeks.
Four weeks. Alderman Schmidt?
Yeah, I just, not specific to the 7th District, but I participated in the Seed of Hope Gala. You were there as well?
Yeah.
And they raised a lot of money for the Pregnancy Center downtown.
You were there playing percussion and he is quite a percussion player. That was neat to see you doing that. All right, we have an item appropriate for closed session tonight, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn in a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.851C, which is considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, namely the city administrator contract. So moved. Thank you, Alderman Sternig. Is there a second? Thank you, Alderman Sparts. I will call the roll. Alderwoman Seizer?
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Sparts?
Aye.
Alderman Zingsheim?
Aye.
Alderman Allen? Alderman Butchlick?
Aye.
Alderman Sternig?
Aye.
And Alderman Berquist?
Aye.
Thank you. We are in closed session. We do not anticipate any action tonight, so we will adjourn from our closed session tonight. Thank you.